Yeah.
They'll be verbal, so y'all might have to, yeah, that's gonna be an issue.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our April seventh Board of Commissioners work session. Those that are here and online. We have Chairman Thurman calling on the phone. He's with us and is Commissioner Gaines calling. He's here. Alright, so we'll go ahead and jump right into new business. Have a presentation of applications parade and assembly. Twenty twenty-two four eight rabies clinic, the planning director, Shannon, Sharon Farrell.
Good evening. Not really a presentation. I'm told this comes back every year that they do a great job, but because they use the public property that they have to come and request permission. I hope, I don't know. I hope so. I don't have anything to add.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
We need to move that. When is it?
It's.
So we got time.
Moving on to item number two, presentation of twenty twenty-two charity boot drive, emergency services director Danny Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Phil, in chairman and commissioner. This is our annual request to do the boot drives. Obviously, we support the Georgia firefighters burn foundation, a local charity care for kids. And this year, we've elected to try to ask the board for permission in our September to use that one for supporting our Dawson County volunteer firefighters. So the dates are before you and I'll read them. The burn foundation will be May twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That will be from the standard time of nine AM to eleven AM, and then from four PM to six PM. The Dawson volunteer firefighters will be the September first, second, and third same times of nine to eleven and four to six. The care for kids will be November twenty-fifth, twenty-six. That'll be nine to eleven and three to five on that one, since we'll have the time change and it'll get dark on us a little quick. I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
Yes. The money, you know, I've got next to a question.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, the money for the firefighters, what will that buy?
So the volunteer firefighters, and there's a group of them here tonight, and we've they get paid per call. So, but we would like to be able to use this to incentivize more volunteers. We've increased our recruitment. And some of those line items, we just, we pay for it out of budget right now. So this would give us that ability to, to buy them gear, buy them some uniforms, you know, other things that may help incentivize and increase volunteerism here in the community.
Don't they have a time fitting in the uniforms? I don't exactly have the uniforms that fit all the time. Don't you make do with what you have?
I had to get fitted. I've come into that.
Well, one way or the other, we try to always, but it's, you know, it's a happy balance between our full-time staff, our part-time staff, and our volunteer staff. And in the volunteer staff, we actually have kind of two separate divisions of that. So you have those volunteers who are suppression certified, which means they can actually fight fire and participate just as any other firefighter would be able to. And then you have those that are in the support role. And this is just as critical a role because there are oftentimes helping get water on the extended fires, rehabbing the firefighters, getting additional air cylinders, filling those air cylinders for us, bringing lights to the scene when it's dark and helping illuminate the scene. So there's a lot of different roles that our personnel play in all of those divisions. But again, sometimes when you look at a prioritization, this would be a good way of us just being able to, to set aside some money through them for fundraising. And, you know, this Dawson County was long built off of volunteer firefighters. As we go throughout this community and look at a lot of our fire stations, the history of volunteer firefighters in this community is rich. And I'm sure that the chairman listening to it, he's probably participated in one or few chicken cues over the lifetime. And that was, that was how they raised back in, back in the day when they needed a set of jaws of life and to serve the community, they went out and they participated in these fundraising events to be able to do that. And we just kind of want to bring back some of that tradition and, you know, kind of help out. We just added, how many did we just add? Seven?
We have fifteen existing, seven in support class and four career people that are.
Is that enough? Probably not.
I had to answer that question? No.
We used to have about ninety.
Oh.
And volunteerism is down. When you look at
Miss Nation.
Volunteer firefighters, this is a national issue. And this is just because people, quite honestly, they want to get a paycheck. Figure if I'm gonna risk my life, I'd like to get paid for it.
Yeah.
And these men and women, they get twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents per call, whether they're five minutes or five hours. So this is just another way of us being able to, you know, get them some decent gear, get them some good uniforms out there, take care of them, and let them know that, you know, we appreciate what they do for the community and their time. And hopefully to increase it amongst, you know, we'd love to see some of these younger kids that, you know, we, when I met with this group, I said, look, it's my goal when I look across this room and see these, the younger group over here to, to get you to become a full-time firefighter. And then use the program to grow our, our citizens to becoming firefighters and then have them to join us full-time. So it's, it's an excellent recruitment tool for us.
Glad you brought up barbecue, because that's my district, and I've had people ask me, they see the pit over there station three, and they want to know, when can we do that again?
I don't know if that pit's even still viable.
Might have to.
Might have to dust that.
Fired up, fired up and have another one.
Volunteers do so much in this county, people don't realize. You know, not, not just this. I'm not, I'm not.
There's a lot of different agencies in our county where volunteers are the backbone.
If they all walked off, we'd see a difference, wouldn't we?
You would. Senior center.
I mean, it's, it's just everywhere. So.
You, you have to have people that are willing to dedicate themselves to public service. You have to. And my hat's off to everyone.
Y'all that do that. I really do. Because I'm telling you, when we get in trouble, we want people on the same, don't we?
We have a level of expectation.
Yes, we do.
You dial those magic three numbers.
Yes, that's true. So I, I appreciate it. And I can't believe we one time had ninety and now, now we're down to what, twenty-four, twenty-five that will. But thank you. You know, I have to ask you a question always.
And COVID's still down, just in case you want.
Well, I'm glad of that.
Alright, we'll move on to item number three, presentation of Office three sixty-five email, IT director Herman Thompson.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. What I am presenting today is an email upgrade countywide. Moving from an email system that we have had for a long time that sits here in this building to Microsoft's cloud solution called Office three sixty-five. Right now, our email server is having some issues. As you know, we've had days where email has been down. And a lot of that has to do with issues that we're having with the email server. The logical thing to do is to move to what most all government entities are doing, and that's moving to Microsoft's cloud solution. So right now, it's here in this building. It handles all of the incoming and outgoing email for all county employees, including the sheriff's office. We have about five hundred email addresses currently, okay, because we have email addresses for full-time and part-time employees as well. And email comprises about sixty-five percent of the total amount of communication that we do as county employees. So why do we change, other than the fact that it's going downhill quickly? Mainstream support from Microsoft ended on Exchange twenty sixteen back in two thousand twenty. And what that means is that mainstream support means that the product that you're using is considered current. And when updates, like security updates are available, you get them first. And that's not the case anymore. And so Microsoft provides updates as they can get them out for legacy products, which this is now considered. This product will be completely dead in the water in twenty twenty-five, which means that no more updates, nothing, regardless of what's going on in the world at that time.
What we have now? What we have now will be done, finished in twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Yeah, right now, we're on basic support because mainstream support ended in twenty twenty. So updates and things like that, which are critical, we don't get them first. So Microsoft updates all of the current products first, then the legacy products. It's kind of their incentive to upgrade, you know, with Microsoft and actually most all software revolvers, there's always some way that they get you to upgrade.
So they just force you into it.
Yeah, I mean, either computers get slower or the software gets slower and, you know, it's like, time to move up. So fortunately, we have to move along with it. So we have had multiple issues that have resulted in downtime of that communication. And that is the main reason. We spend a lot of time at night, weekends, and during the day, trying to keep our email server up and running. It is almost a full-time job just to keep it up and running, and that is no exaggeration, because we have had so many issues with it. So what I'm proposing is that we move to Office three sixty-five. The version that we are looking at is called G C C E one. It is completely cloud-based, so no server actually sits inside this building, which is good because Microsoft handles all the updates. They handle the backup of your email data. And that gets rid of hardware and software issues on our side. Whereas right now, all of that is our responsibility. Hardware and software issues, it's on us. With this, we put that on Microsoft. Okay, and as I mentioned, this email comprises about sixty-five percent of all the communication we do in the county. Okay, this will have everything that we need right now, and moving to twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four, we're going to move to a different product, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. With this email product, each user gets fifty gigabytes, okay? Microsoft controls the spam control, which it does a pretty good job at. It also provides virus protection at the server level. It includes Microsoft Teams, okay, which is a collaboration tool. I don't know if you've ever seen that. Some of our departments already use Teams. This integrates it with their email and everything. And it includes Microsoft OneDrive, one terabyte per user. So the cost, we have qualified with Microsoft to receive government pricing. Okay, and that's its own process unto itself. This product is eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents per user per year, which comes out to forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars total per year. That amount will be the same unless there is some increase from Microsoft in twenty twenty-three. So when I do my twenty twenty-three budget, that will be included in there as part of that. Okay?
You know there'll be an increase.
There always is. And Melissa thankfully tries to keep up with all that. And whenever we have something, you know, kind of in the gray area here, we haven't implemented it yet to find out, are these prices still current? You know, because you never know. So in twenty twenty-four, when we start the next round of workstation upgrades, okay, we did the last one back in twenty eighteen. That was when we started it. It was a three-year process. We're going to ask to start that again in twenty twenty-four. That will be six years from the time that we did the last one. When we do that, we're going to move to Office three sixty-five G three. Okay, it's G C C E three, sorry. What that includes is that includes full desktop versions of all of the Office products, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Outlook. Okay, right now, we use a different version of Microsoft Office on all of our workstations. That does not upgrade to the newer versions. We get updates for it, but if we've installed Office twenty sixteen on your computer, which many of them do run twenty sixteen, it's not going up to twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-one, which is the current version. With Office three sixty-five G three, you automatically get those updates. Okay, so we subscribe to Office three sixty-five now for the forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty. That gets us our email and some of these other tools for the next two years. Then in twenty twenty-four, I just want to give you guys a heads up on this, so that everybody's on the same page. I'll be asking that we move to the E three version, so that we have, so that everyone across the county has complete desktop versions of Microsoft Office that are continually updated from Microsoft. It upgrades our mailboxes from fifty gigabytes to a hundred gigabytes of storage, and we do have some users that do push that limit. Some of them right now are coasting right along fifty gigabytes, because they keep everything, which is a good thing to do. And we can work with those users when the time comes. It includes Microsoft Teams. It includes unlimited cloud storage for OneDrive, and it includes Microsoft message encryption. The cost for E three is two hundred and forty-six dollars per user per year, which comes out to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per year. And that is what it would be from that point forward. Okay, barring any increase or anything like that. Okay, as part of this move, we will move to a new domain. Okay, we will still have DawsonCounty.org. And anyone who has a DawsonCounty.org email address will still get their email, but we will be moving to DawsonCountyGA.gov. Part of the reason for doing that is that when government agencies use dot G O V as part of their domain name, it creates trust with the citizens. Okay, because right now, I could go out and buy a dot org domain name and call it DawsonCountyGA.org if I wanted to. Anybody can buy those, anyone. Okay? We have DawsonCounty.org. We want to move it to DawsonCountyGA.gov. We would do this in stages by departments. Okay, so we'll take planning, upgrade all theirs to DawsonCountyGA.gov. Their DawsonCounty.org email addresses will automatically forward to the new email address. Any previous emails that they had, we will import into the new email box. Okay? So we have a pretty good strategy laid out in order to implement this. And quite honestly, this upgrade, except for the work that the IT department did after the twenty eighteen hack, is probably the largest upgrade that the IT department in Dawson County has ever done, because it affects every single user, okay, whether you have a computer or not. Okay? So now that we have additional staff, we can actually make this happen. Okay? So in closing, it had been my plan to include this upgrade to Office three sixty-five as part of my twenty twenty-three budget. And that was already in there in my five-year plan, but because of the issues that we have been having and the downtime that our users have had because of email issues, we need to go ahead and do this. Okay, there's no upgrade that is going to help us. We actually have tried. That was one, that was a couple of very long weekends that we tried doing that, did not work, did not help the situation. We ended up with the exact same problems and had to actually go back to what we had previously, because it was more stable. So we're ready to go ahead and implement this. It's forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's what we would need right away. It's going to be the same next year. And I would ask if you guys would please consider voting on it during the voting session this afternoon, because we are ready to move on this and get our email into the twenty-first century. And I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
So the forty thousand dollars, that they don't prorate it for the year or anything, or will it be?
It will cover us for that one-year period from the time that we do it till next year.
Next year, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, they don't do it based on a calendar year.
Okay, what about, and I guess they have a way for y'all to have access for, like, open record requests and stuff, since we're not actually housing the server, how they do it?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, in fact, this will actually make it much easier. We spend a lot of time on open records requests. And because of the age of our system, it does complicate that process. And we spend hours, sometimes even on a simple open records request. So it will make it much easier.
What are, what are we paying now for any kind of support, tech support?
Nothing.
We'll pay anything now?
Because.
You know what we paid for the last upgrade? You said it was sixteen?
It probably would have been along the lines of about three thousand dollars. Yeah. That's what it typically is back then, or was back then.
But this eliminates some cost on equipment on our end.
Yes.
Servers and things like it.
Yes. Email is one of the biggest processing servers that we have here.
You know what average costs of those are?
You'll see it on my budget this year.
I made that, what?
We have about a quarter of a million dollars in servers.
So roughly, what percentage of that would eliminate us needing to replace eventually be as far?
Maybe fifteen to twenty thousand?
Who's hoping it was forty-four thousand?
I wish I could get that to line up for you, but.
We've only the wash.
And we, we do use virtualization here at the county. And what that means is that back in the day, when you bought a server or when you needed to run a server in government or in business, you went out and bought a server. Okay, if you needed to expand, you bought more servers. Okay? Virtualization allows us to run multiple servers on top of one physical box called the host. Okay, by doing that, it reduces our cost greatly. So instead of coming to you every time I need a new server and saying, hey, you know, I really need twenty thousand dollars for a new server, we just use what we have and create a new virtual server on the existing platform. So that was a huge cost savings industry-wide.
This would at the least open you up some more space for future expansion of other things.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're wanting to upgrade the servers next year. So that will be part of that, and this will be taken into consideration, of course.
What about, I know it's, I think you said twenty twenty-four, but what does it cost us now to put the office suites on a computer, the license and?
Each computer is around sixty dollars.
Okay.
Hey, Herman, can you hear me? This was Commissioner James.
Yes, hi.
So I know we went to that, or this platform maybe a year ago in my own company, and implementation was somewhat of the heavy lift, because it requires, especially those with phones, to have a separate app. And implementation, or I'm sorry, not implementation, not the right word, integration of the calendars that we are accustomed to. Can you speak to how you plan and what your process is going to be to roll this out to staff, because it is a completely new pathway to access emails and calendars?
Yeah, of course. Many of our staff are already using the Outlook app on their cell phones, because that is the most compatible mail program with our current email system. So that doesn't really change. What we would do as far as a rollout is we're going to do a rollout by departments. And because we're moving from our dot org to our dot G O V, it actually is going to simplify that overall process, because normally, if we were just staying with a dot org, then yes, we would have to be actually importing accounts into. Then yes, we would have to be actually importing accounts into the new system. With this, we literally are just setting up new accounts and then importing their old email into it. Each user is going to have to be touched, so that we can set that up for them and import their email. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just know it's a, it's a different look than what I was accustomed to when we migrated over to it in my own private company. So I just, I know it was somewhat of a challenge to roll that out, but.
Yeah, it.
You got an action plan to stay ahead of it, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, absolutely. It should not be that much of a difference, because they're still going to be using Outlook on their computers. Email is going to come in the same way it did before. The moving to the dot gov just gives us a great migration platform to work with, so.
Good, and the, you know, obviously, as I've said in the past, technology makes a difference and it makes our jobs more efficient, more effective, so. I wouldn't expect another, another headcount coming from you, requests coming from me for a while.
I will do my best.
How long will it take per department to implement this?
The departments are different sizes, of course. Let's say a department like, I'll pick on Sharon again, planning. Couple days. Some of the smaller ones, we might be able to hit in a day, others like Public Works and things like that, possibly a week. But because, again, because of the move from dot org to dot gov, they're still going to get their email. So whereas, to give you an idea, and this kind of speaks to what Chris was talking about when he did his migration. If we were staying with dot org, we would literally have to do all five hundred employees at the very same time. And even with my new staff, I'll just tell you, that is not a pleasant thought. So that's why I said this gives us a great migration path.
Any other questions? Does y'all have a problem with moving this forward?
Will, will they be, will they go as well?
Commissioner Gaines, Chairman, you planned to be at the voting session as well, correct?
Affirm, yes, I do.
Yeah, as long as they got input, you know, I, I wouldn't want to do it just to us, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Funds. What was this?
General?
General fund?
I thought he might have in his budget, but I looked and it said, no.
That's why I had planned on it for next year's budget, but can't handle any more downtime, so.
Are they okay with moving it? They said they vote, so they're fine, yeah. I'm good with it.
I'm, I'm okay with moving it.
I think it's something that we're going to have to do.
Yes.
It just seems like it's getting worse and worse, and I know you see it more than we do, but.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
There's so much that happens behind the scenes, and like I said, a lot of time is spent at night and on the weekend, because some of the work. Would, just trying to fix something or update something, take us down during the day.
Yeah, and I know if we can get this done, y'all have, I'm sure some other things y'all could work on besides just trying to keep the email up.
Oh, absolutely. This would, this, believe me, will make Cameron Bird's day. Actually, it's year.
You have something to do besides sleeping, you think?
We do, occasionally Netflix, you know.
Don't get bored.
Oh, no, trust me, there's always something. If, if we're not actively outworking on something. Then we're documenting what we've done previously, planning for the next install, there's always stuff to be done.
I know it's so frustrating. You know, you can't get your work done. People can't get their work done with all this downtime.
Absolutely, and that's, that is one of my big things is productivity. And looking for any ways that we can. That's why we upgraded monitors last year. Because it has been shown that that increases user productivity. And if our county staff is not working, there's an issue, and I don't want that issue to be IT, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, County Manager Report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon. Dawson County recently was nominated for the EMS Service of the Year. We were within the top three. In addition, Captain Paul Cloud, Lieutenant Josh Warren, firefighter paramedic. Kerry Manny and firefighter EMT Brady Leest. Were nominated for the Dr. J Jeffrey Marshall Excellence in Emergency Cardiac Care Award. We were the runner-ups in that, so I don't know, Chief Thompson, if you want to elaborate on that award. Yeah, and in other emergency services news, the Dawson County just learned today that it earned fifth place in the statewide for the Burn Foundation Boot Drive. Parks and Rec turf fields are completed. There are some minor punch list items to be addressed going forward. And details are forthcoming for ribbon cutting along those lines. The Marshall's office is up and running, as we talked before. The progress and goal overview was emailed to you the other day. If you didn't receive it, let me know and I'll get you a copy of it. They've done an outstanding job of bringing things current. Tuesday, Commissioner Fawcett, Public Works Director Ms. Farr, myself, visited the Pickens County Transfer Station. It was a very impressive sign. I think Commissioner Fawcett would agree with that. So if I know other commissioners and the chairman were unable to attend, if you wish to attend, just let me know and I'll reset that up. Or anybody else that would like to see that. As of March, planning has issued two hundred and forty-nine residential permits. In two thousand and twenty-one, four hundred and eighty-four were issued. So at this time last year, we had cert, we had issued a hundred and eleven permit, showing that in the last three months, we almost did what we've done in two thousand and twenty-one. So there are twenty-five waiting for final zoning check, and as we speak, so kudos to the planning department and their staff. They're very busy, a lot going on, so I just wanted to recognize them for their hard work, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. County Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Nothing to report, except that we do have need for an executive session this evening.
Okay.
To discuss, at least from, from my perspective, real estate transactions. And I'm not sure if there's anything else that was on the agenda to discuss an executive session tonight besides land transactions.
I'm, I'm not aware of anything.
So then it'll be for land transactions.
So we'll just do that after the voting session. All right, thank y'all for joining us. We are adjourned. We'll take about a ten-minute break and then we'll go into our voting session.